Good evening and welcome to the July 12th organizational meeting for the Bethlehem Central School District Board of Education. The meeting was originally called to order at 6:00 PM and the board entered into executive session to discuss an individual personnel matter as well as a contractual matter. At this time, first item on the agenda is the appointment of district officers.
We do the Pledge of Allegiance.
No.
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of district officers which are action items one through six.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, any abstentions that item carries? Since I was one of those, I'm going to ask Ms. Key how to give me the oath of office as district clerk. Oh, did I skip over something?
Pledge of Allegiance.
It's all about me, sorry. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we do introductions?
Dave Hurst.
Charmaine Woodgesinger.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Holly Dellenbach.
Jody Monroe.
Brittany Barrett.
Lynn Lenhart.
Christine Beck.
Meredith Moriarty.
Michael Cooper.
And Judy Kehoe.
Now, the next item on the agenda is the swearing-in of the district clerk. So Ms. Kehoe?
Over here in front of the flag. Or closer to the microphone. Can you repeat after me, please? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New York.
Of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of district clerk.
Of district clerk.
Congratulations.
The next item on the agenda is swearing-in of our new board members. So we have two this year for a term starting July 1, 2017, through June 30, 2020. If Holly, we'll go by alphabetical order. We're going to do the same thing that we just did.
We go to the bottom?
If you'd like to. All right, just please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education member.
Of Board of Education member.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education member.
Of Board of Education member.
And then finally, we have Christine Beck who is renewed.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Education member.
Of Board of Education member. Thank you.
And the next item is swearing-in of the superintendent, Ms. Jody Monroe.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
The superintendent of schools.
The superintendent of schools.
All right, at this time, the agenda states that we are going to request nominations for the position of Board President for the 2017-2018 school year.
I would like to nominate Ms. Lynn Lenhart. Does someone have to second it?
I'll second that nomination.
Thank you.
And I would like to nominate Christine Beck.
And can I get a second nomination for Ms. Beck?
I'll second it.
Do we have any more nominations for this role? At this time, Ms. Lenhart and Ms. Beck, do both of you accept your board members' nominations for this seat?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so with no more nominations, I'm going to consider that closed. I'm going to ask you to vote on those two candidates. All in favor of Ms. Lenhart for the Board President seat? Any yeses?
Say aye.
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 Any noes? Any abstentions? Three. And then all in favor of Ms. Beck for the position?
Aye.
Aye.
So with a vote of four, or sorry, four for Ms. Beck, three for Ms. Lenhart, the result would be that Ms. Christine Beck is being appointed as President of the Board of Education for the 2017-18 school year. You can assume the seat and congratulations. And with this position, we will do the oath again, Christine, for this role.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of President of the Board of Education.
Of President of the Board of Education. Thank you.
You can assume your seat. I will nod if you would. All right, now that I have no idea what I'm doing. All right, let me get to that page. Selection of the Board of Education Committee Representatives, item number six.
Vice President.
Vice President. Oh, how did I miss that? Sorry. Okay. Item five, election of officers. Item C, Board Vice President. Are there nominations for Vice President?
I nominate Mike Cooper. I'll second him.
Are there any other nominations?
I will nominate Lynn Lenhart.
I second that.
Do you accept that?
Do you accept those nominations?
I do.
Do you accept the nomination of Vice President?
If you would like to be Vice President, it's fine with me.
Okay, I guess I accept.
Great.
I draw my acceptance.
Okay. So, do we motion Lynn to be Vice President?
Is there only one?
There's only one. Mike withdrew.
Then we can either vote or the district clerk can cast one vote for the board. Either way.
Take a vote, Lynn Lenhart, for Board Vice President. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
That's it.
That's it? So Lynn?
And she has sworn in.
I know you swear.
I swear. Oh, I get to do it now.
Brittany has.
It's a learning curve. I'm all right with that.
Here's the language.
Thank you. Okay. I do, Lynn Lenhart has been appointed Vice President of the Board of Education for the 2017-2018 school year. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
The duties of the office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
The duties of the office of Vice President of the Board of Education.
Item number six, selection of Board of Education Committee Representatives. So Brittany, are you going to take down two volunteers for each of the committees? Okay. Subject A, Audit Committee. I'll volunteer again for the Audit Committee.
I'll serve on it again. Need one more.
Well, I guess I can stay on it again.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Okay. Subject B, BCTA Process Committee.
I can do that.
I'll volunteer.
Okay.
Did you get all that, Brittany? So Holly, Meredith, me.
Subject C, BCUEA Process Committee. I'll volunteer for that.
I can do that.
Should be the other three.
The other three.
Oh, okay.
The president fills in when someone can.
Thank you. Subject D, Facilities and Grounds Committee.
I'll do that.
It doesn't matter.
No, go ahead.
I know Mike and I have said on it forever, but it's totally up to you.
If you'd like to do it.
I'd like to learn about that.
Okay, do it. I'll do it.
Do you want to do it, Jonathan?
Mike's fine.
Okay.
Subject E, Health Insurance Committee.
I have, I have one right now. I have one.
Just pause.
I have Audit Committee and BCUEA.
Okay, two.
So Jonathan and myself on that. Subject F, Policy Committee.
I would like to do that again.
I'll go ahead. Oh, wait, wait. That's three.
That's three. Are you sure you want to do that, Jonathan?
No.
Michael and.
No, I'd rather not because I have something else in mind.
So we have two. Anybody else?
I'll volunteer.
Policy Committee? Yeah. And the last committee is the Superintendent Evaluation Committee.
I'd like to be on that.
With continuing members. The only thing that has left to do is to finish the, assess the, it's been in place for four years.
Okay, that's fine.
We may need to work to adjust.
Yeah, adjust, tweaking, yeah. So who were the people?
Jonathan, Charmaine.
Okay.
Okay. Do we even have people for all committees? Yes. Item number seven, Other Appointments. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following other appointment actions, items one through 10. Can I, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number eight, Designations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following designation, action items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, Authorizations. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following authorization, action items one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Bonding, item number 10, Bonding of Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following appointment of Bonding of Personnel, action items one through three.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 11, Other Items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following policy action, items one through four.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 12, Approval of the Minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from June 21, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The Superintendent's Report, item number 13.
Just two things. I just want to mention that we did, it seems like it was so long ago, but we had a great graduation this year. The kids were great. It was a really nice program. All of their speeches, I thought, were fantastic, so, and the class was just wonderful at the end of the year, and the graduation ceremony was nice. And just like to welcome our two new board members at their first meeting, so welcome, Meredith and Holly.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Item number 14, the Board of Education Report.
I feel I want to acknowledge your 29 years of service. And when I nominated you, it's not that, Christine, by virtue of the majority of the board members, I nominated you last year to put you in line to be President your 30th year because I thought you would have the skills to guide this board. I trust in Ms. Beck's skills. I also didn't run myself. I knew what it would look like for me to be sitting up there should I be elected. I chose not to do that because I have other commitments, but I also wanted to honor your 30 years of service.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Well, on that note, I would like to say that I have the utmost respect for Lynn, and I consider her a great colleague, and I was not running against Lynn. I thought that I could contribute to the board, and I would have liked to have Lynn kind of mentor me this year with it being your 30th year, and you have a lot of knowledge, and there's nobody on this board that can replace that. And I thought that I wanted, I knew I would be here and I would take advantage of that, and there's nobody else I'd rather have is sitting right next to me, helping me along. And any comments and anything that you can give me would be very appreciative, so thank you.
Don't worry.
No, I wasn't worried. I, no, and I told you ahead of time, so.
And I wanted to comment on, Ms. Monroe's comment on the graduation, that I thought the speakers were excellent. There was one in particular that I had to ask Ms. Woodgesinger for a tissue because he brought tears to my eyes. I thought the speech was very moving, and it was a great classy graduating class, and I was happy to be a part of it, so.
I don't think I've heard three students in a row speak as well and as eloquently as these three did. Each had a different perspective, but each had presented well, and their words touched different people in different ways, but I think no one walked out of there without having some sort of emotional experience in a very positive way. And that was a wonderful experience for my first graduation as a board member.
Anybody else?
I do have, I do have a question, and it's related to the coaching changes.
For the track?
Yeah.
Is that all?
It's, it was something that Jody had communicated.
It was in the updates.
In the updates.
Yeah, but it's not on for approval.
No, there's no, there's nothing on for approval.
My question is this, it's, you know, your comment was that this, the changes would strengthen both the boys and girls' track and field program and better provide coaching for all components of the track and field. But what I noticed was it seems that we're going from, we're eliminating a coach because you're listing seven coaches and you're proposing six coaches. So my question is, how can you, how does eliminating a coach achieve the goal of more coaching and better overall?
Well, this is Mr. Key's recommendation based on his assessment of the program and speaking with the coaches, but he would, because there would be an executive coach, that's what he termed.
Right, one executive and five varsity.
Right. The other coaches would have more specialty areas. So for example, there are certain coaches now who are more well-versed in some of the activities. So right now, some of the boys and girls still work with a coach even though they might be assigned to the boys' program, and they still would be, but they would actually focus more on connecting the, because of the one coach overseeing both programs, he would be able to assess which coaches certain students should be working with.
Okay, Jody, if you're going from six coaches, seven coaches to six coaches in total, including the head, is that a loss of FTEs as far as?
It would be one less coach, and the additional, there would be an additional stipend for the executive coach for both of those seasons.
Okay, so from money, money is not really the issue. My question more was the number of hours that the kids would get, the students would get with coaching staff. It seems they're getting more hours now, and I don't know. I don't know how this works.
Charmaine, I thought you advocated getting an extra coach. Was it last year or the year before that there was?
No, actually, I've never advocated for the number of coaches. The Booster Club will, I'm on Booster Club, and the Booster Club will supplement the coaching staff with program assistance. They have, that's why.
They've been doing that.
Yeah, and I would imagine that should the coach, whether it's the executive coach or the assistant coaches request additional coaching, the Booster Club will hire. I am very familiar with this proposal because, you know, people have used me as a sounding board, you know, how would the parents respond, et cetera, et cetera. It would be a phenomenal contribution to the track team, partly because I think there'd be, coaches would be able to draw from similar workouts. There'd be a single person constructing those workouts with extensive knowledge of track, and then those assistant coaches would be implementing them. Because right now, there's a limit on what I can say, but I do, knowing the track program and knowing this proposal, this would be an incredible improvement, and it would benefit both programs.
I know Mr. Key has spoken with, obviously, he's done the assessment of the athletic program, the track program. I know he's spoken with both of the head coaches currently in this model and redesign, and they are in agreement, it's a better model. I think what Charmaine said, I forgot about, is that the executive coach would be the ones planning the workouts and doing all that. There would be more consistency between the boys and girls, so you wouldn't, that loss is one of the head coaching positions being absorbed would be executive coach.
Would the executive coach be spending more time as a result?
Yes, that's why there's additional stipend.
So what you're, so it's, is it really a loss of one FTE or is it really not? I mean, is it a loss or?
It's a loss of a body.
Of a body. I understand the loss of a body.
But time-wise, probably not.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Is it possible to have Lynn come in and talk about that at some point, just the restructuring of it, just so everybody has a better understanding?
I could ask him, the one thing we need to do, just to move it along so we get people appointed, is we do have agreement to do an MOA, so he can then post for the positions. I could certainly ask him if he's around at the August meeting to come and explain it more.
Just so I can have a better understanding of it.
I would appreciate that.
And if he's not available for the August meeting, I could see if he could come to the September meeting. And there is a plan, we agreed that we would assess it after the winter and spring sports seasons to make sure it was.
Working.
Working. And I know he has reached out to other districts who have a similar model.
And I would anticipate under this model, the programs would become smaller.
Okay.
I know that.
Okay.
Because, because the expectations, it's no longer a running club, it will be a varsity track team.
So it wouldn't be, there wouldn't be cuts, but.
There wouldn't be cuts, but there would be expectations that people perform at a certain level.
Okay.
Would this impact those that use track in the winter to stay in shape for other sports? They would, they would still be able to participate?
Yeah, that's a great question.
No, what I'm saying is sometime, if you look at the girls' track team, for example, and I would imagine the boys, I think there's been a change in the boys over a number of years. There are kids who are non-competitive runners and who use the program.
Right.
It's a social thing.
Right.
My sense is some of those people may or may not stay in the program, not because they'll be cut, but the workouts are going to become varsity workouts.
More challenging. More challenging. I guess we would monitor that, the numbers.
Right, I mean, I think it's important, though, to monitor the numbers.
Sure.
Because this is one area where it's very small cost, serves a lot of students, and I would hate to see some students that are participating now not participate. And if it means that we need something to offer them, I think we should make that available. And when my son was running, and he was very competitive, there were a lot of people that were non-competitive in, you know, in the track, they just didn't go to the meets. They just ran for, you know, well, the social aspect of it.
Well, maybe that's an opportunity, we could, obviously, we would evaluate the new model. We would assess the numbers, what does it look like, and perhaps there's another venue for some of those students if it were more competitive, where you look at some kind of intramural kind of program or running club or, you know. There's other options you can look at.
I'm not saying it's going to be a drastic drop-off, but having watched the program for, I think, five years, I would expect that some kids would say, this is just too hard. It's now a varsity sport. And I don't know if it's a JV level, too, but some people will just say, it's not what we used to be, and they would, I don't think they'd be cut, but there would be an expectation that you participate at the highest level you possibly can.
So I can ask Lynn if he can come to the August meeting.
That would be, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, item number 15, Recognition of Visitors on an Agenda Item. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on the item on the agenda? Okay. Item number 16, Finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items one through 12.
So moved.
Second. I don't know if you guys have a second, but.
Discussion?
Yeah, just want to mention, as the, going to the BCCF, the Bethlehem Central Community Foundation, the contributions of the foundation to the innovation, innovative grants that teachers applied to, and we had the list of grants, and I just think, you know, it's great that, you know, that they are supporting the staff in that way, in addition to other scholarship activities also. So I wanted to mention that, and also Paul Wing, again, being so generous in his donations to a district as part of this STEAM program and providing training for the use of drones this summer.
And the community, a couple reps from the Community Foundation, I believe, are coming to the September meeting to just let us know what grants were awarded.
Well, that's great.
So they couldn't come to the summer meeting, but I said September will be fine.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 17, Professional Personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items one through 31.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Just want to point out, the middle school, the middle school, Jackie Monroe is.
Oh. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And we have Jackie Monroe here from the middle school, hall principal, if you want to say[1669.62] to say hello to the board, and, welcome.
Hi, Brittany. I just want to say how excited I am to be staying in the central school district, and I'm really looking forward to joining the middle school team, so thank you all very much.
We're excited to have you.
So Jackie served the high school, hall principal this year for the interim for Dave Dobell's position. She'll be continuing in the middle school next year.
In the middle school, great. Item number 18, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action, items one through seven.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 19, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action, items one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a.
No, go ahead.
Ms. Merritt, could you, I have a couple things on the dogs, the social service dog policy, if you could, I'm just adjusted language. We don't actually have to read it, but there is a clause, it's, I think it lists four things where, when dogs can be removed from the school. I would recommend including language that says, including but not limited to. I think you should have any, anything, if you want that dog out of it, you know, so it shouldn't be just limited to four. So just say, including but not limited to would be an included thing.
Absolutely.
And then under the drone, I think it's the longer one, I forget which of its policy or regulations, which one is longer, but the first statement, there's two, okay, bifocals aren't working.
I think the regulation one is longer.
Okay. There's those, I can't read it. Do you have it?
Yeah, hold on, hold on just a minute, regulate. It's.
Okay, thank you. It's the other one. It's not this one.
Which one? Oh, drones regulate.
Okay. The first sentence is in contradict, the first paragraph's in contradiction with the second, because first you start off by saying it's, is, let's see, okay, is prohibits the unauthorized, okay, I see, the unauthorized is the, because I was going to say, except for what's authorized by this policy, but the word authorized takes care of it, unauthorized, I'm good. Sorry, I misread something. Don't mind me, I'm thinking out loud.
I have a question about the superintendent's agreement. The, I just want to be clear, the raise that it discusses, that is for the extended year, correct? We're extending, it's the third year, right? Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 20, recognition of visitors on a non-agenda item. Is there anybody in the audience with it?
Yes.
If you can come up to the microphone and state your name.
Hi, my name is Steve Bold. My daughter is a rising senior, and I just wanted to talk about the memo that came out from the Counseling Center earlier this, this week. And it announced the restructuring of the center. And basically what the effect is, it's a devastating blow to the senior class. Most of the seniors are now being reassigned to new counselors. The process that is set up, we have all gone through, we've done everything that we were asked. You know, when they said, meet with your academic advisor during junior year, my wife and I went in, we met with the advisor, we did all of the talking about my daughter's strengths and weaknesses and where she should apply, et cetera, et cetera, and they were getting ready to do the, the letter of recommendation. And now, we just get this memo saying that that advisor is assigned to somebody else, and they're starting, the seniors are starting fresh with new advisors. And I spoke with Ms. Connor, the head of the Counseling Center, and, you know, she said that, you know, these changes are going to benefit the school district, et cetera, et cetera, and that most of the heavy lifting for college is done in junior year, and that all they're doing in senior year is clicking to send the transcripts and everything off to the colleges. And yet, I think that's absolutely ridiculous. We know, we've been through this process with my older daughter, and it's key to have a senior advisor, you know, we're, we're three months from the kids applying for college, and to change their advisors now, it just seems like it's not a good implementation of the new structure. I don't understand why you couldn't have left the senior advisors with the seniors, get them through what they have to do, through the FAFSA, through the application process, and then look at changing the structure of this. By doing it now, it's devastating to the senior class. And the, the, the place that these kids are at right now is, they're all on edge. They've all gone through, they did all of this stuff in junior year to get them ramped up, and now, we're, we're changing the, we're changing the game here. So I would really suggest that the implementation of this be looked at as taking into consideration that the seniors need the continuity of working with the same advisor. My daughter started out with, as freshman year, with Dr. Carr, and she was great. And then in sophomore year, because of an administrative change, she got transferred to a new advisor, and she's with Ms. Z. And now, she's getting changed again. She happens to be going back to Dr. Carr, but they haven't been in touch for two years. You know, there's no, and what we've been told by administration is that the counselors are all going to talk to each other, they're going to work together, they're going to, you know, the, Dr. Carr is going to hear from, but in fact, the kids have contacted their new advisors and gotten emails back, and the advisors are all saying that, you know, the policy is, I'm, I'm now assigned to this group, I'm not assigned to you, you're going to have to deal with your new counselor. And, you know, there were kids who were in lab school who asked their new advisors, you know, about the process, and the new advisors didn't even know what lab school is. So I think this implementation is just not, you know, not fair to the seniors, and I would ask that, you know, it be revisited at this time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Do you want, do you want to talk about that at all, or?
Well, I am following up with Mrs. Connor about that, and the counselors that they've had certainly can write a recommendation. There's no policy about that, so we'll clarify that. And in addition, the, all the counselors should know what lab school is, that, if anyone is saying that, I'd like to know, because there, there's no excuse. All our counselors, this isn't that big of a district that they wouldn't know what the program is.
I understand, and I think it's a great idea, as we, we discussed, that all of the counselors be able to talk, and if a college calls and says, you know, what's lab school, that all of the advisors know about that. I think that's great, and I think you can take a year to work with the counselors and bring them up to speed on this. But what I'm saying to you is that the parents and the students are going through an incredibly stressful time over the next, you know, 90 days trying to get into school, and I'm, I'm, I'm not looking to, to throw specific counselors under the bus. These people are hard work, they've been there for the kids and everything, but they're caught in, in a ridiculous situation because they're telling the kids, I can't write your letter because now I'm assigned to somebody else. They're telling, they're emailing this stuff to the kids. I mean, you know, I could bring in the emails and everything, but I mean, I'm not looking to have the counselors, you know, get in trouble for following the policy. I think we just need to look at the implementation of this and, you know, get these kids through the next six months or whatever, and off to school, and then you want to change it, I think, I think it's, I think it's fine, but I just think this implementation is very bad for the seniors.
Jody, did I hear you clearly that, that if somebody had a counselor last year, that they could write, that counselor could write a letter for that student?
Absolutely.
So at least the seniors who had a particular counselor last year could have that counselor write their letter?
Yes.
I think that needs to be clarified, because my daughter.
Absolutely.
My daughter got an email from her advisor saying, you know, I love you, I'm sorry, but we can't do that.
I already contacted Ms. Connor about that, so that will be clarified.
Thank you for bringing your concerns. Item number 21, future meetings and events. Wednesday, August 8th is the anticipated executive session at 6 o'clock with the regular board meeting at 7:00. Wednesday, August 23rd is the board retreat, which is open to the public, correct, which starts at 5:30, if anybody wants to come. Wednesday, September 6th is executive session at 6:00 and regular board meeting at 7:00. And just item 22, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will be out of town for the next board meeting, so I won't be here.
But not the, you're going to be here for the retreat, right?
Yes.
So moved. Hit the gavel.
Hit the gavel. And in record time.
Look at that.
Oh, no, I want to.
Not a record.